Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee's Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Campbell, Morgan?
Yes.
Nordentoff?
Here.
Cap?
Here.
Hey, Zach. Where?
Here.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's introduce you to the flagrant of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, excuse me. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from the meeting that was held back on September 7th. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, a motion to approve as submitted would be in order?
Motion to approve.
Mr.?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nordentoff? All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for zoning map amendments, special use permits, site plan review, and minor sign exceptions requested by Patson, Inc., doing business as Trans Chicago Truck Group.
Yes. Patson, Inc., doing business as Trans Chicago Truck Group is seeking the following for a 26-acre site located at 775 South Illinois Route 21, and that's on the east side of Illinois Route 21, south of Manchester. They're seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property from O2 PUD Office Campus District as a planned unit development to C2 Community Commercial District. A special use permit to allow the establishment and operation of a vehicle truck dealership with outdoor storage and display. A special use permit to increase the size of directional signs by more than 25 percent. And four-square-foot directional signs are allowed by code, and nine-square-foot signs are proposed for the directional signs. A special use permit for landscaping associated with the dealership, including a departure from the parking lot landscaping island requirements, and a departure from the requirement that 10 percent of area internal to the parking lot and display area be landscaped green area. They're also seeking site plan review of a vehicle truck dealership with outdoor storage and display. A minor sign exception to increase the height of the main ground sign by 50 percent, from 12 feet to 18 feet. A minor sign exception to allow a commercial message on directional signage, and then design standard modifications for departures from the requirement that the west elevation, which is over 100 feet in length, have a two-foot minimum vertical variation in roof height that is repeated on center no more than every 50 linear feet, and another design standard modification for departures from the requirement that the west facade provides 50 percent transparency between 2 and 10 feet above grade. And currently, that transparency percentage is 30.2 percent. Please note that due to zoning ordinance text amendments recently approved by the village board, special use permits are no longer needed for those design standard modification requests. The applicant's team is in attendance to present their requests on the zoning map amendments, special use permit, and site plan review requests. The planning and zoning board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the village board for their determination. The planning and zoning board has decision-making authority on the minor sign exception and design standard modification requests.
Thank you, Clara. Excuse me. As this particular matter, many aspects of it are part of a public hearing. I would request anybody from the petitioner or members of the general public who intend to give testimony, ask questions, or make comments to please stand and be sworn in by our acting village attorney. So if you think you're going to ask a question or say something, you need to stand and be sworn in.
Raise your right hand, please. I promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner, and I do have a handheld mic if it's easier. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Doug Casey. I am president and owner of Trans Chicago Truck Group. Very pleased to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We're here tonight to present details about our plan, our applications, the minor sign exceptions, site plan review. We plan to answer all of those questions that you may have for us, and specifically want to give more details about the state-of-the-art new truck dealership that we're proposing for the site on the corner of Manchester and Milwaukee. In addition to our details to the plan, what we'd like to do is spend time detailing a little bit about Trans Chicago Truck Group, who we are, how we operate, and some of the things that our business is key for, and how we plan to operate on the site, and address any concerns that you may have. With us tonight, we have a great group. We have Trans Chicago Truck Group members are here. We also have a group of professionals that we've put together as a consultant team. With us, we have CAGE Civil Engineering. We have Ketone Partners, who is handling our project consulting and construction consultants. We have MPS Law, which is our real estate and entitlement attorney team. We have Cornerstone Architects, who has designed the project and put together a beautiful facility for us. And we have KLOA, who represents a traffic study group, who has done traffic studies both at the site that we're proposing, as well as our existing facilities, so we can share some details on our existing traffic patterns and how it may impact our operation. We are zeroing in in the next week or so on our general contractor and our union subcontractors. Those are all to be determined, but we are making progress in that regard. Each will have a chance to come up at some point to present their areas of expertise, and of course, answer any questions that you might have. But before we get to that, I just want to talk a little bit about how excited Trans Chicago Truck Group is to become part of the Village of Gurnee. We're confident over time we're going to become a very good partner for both the community, its businesses, and its residents. I actually have a little history in Gurnee. I lived in the Heather Ridge subdivision for about 10 years. I'm acutely aware of how the residents care for their neighborhood, and I want to be part of that, and I want to enhance that, and I want to make sure we address any concerns that anyone may have with our project, and we look forward to supporting the effort of making Gurnee the best it can be. In return, our relationship does bring value. Since we are in business of selling new and used trucks and commercial truck parts, we generate significant sales tax dollars. We do that for municipalities that we are represented in. I'll talk a little bit more later in our presentation about where we operate, but we plan to do the same for Gurnee, and our model will represent the same benefit for Gurnee and its residents. Some of those sales taxes, of course, we pay directly to Gurnee by the Illinois Department of Revenue. In addition to our sales tax generation, we do create significant real property taxes. Of course, that benefits on an annual and recurring basis. They include local school districts, of course, park districts, and many other areas in Gurnee that those sales tax and real estate tax dollars go to benefit. And I'd say lastly, we are proposing or will have 50 employees when we start our operation. I'll talk a little bit more about that. We plan to grow to 100 employees within three years, but we look forward to using that to create opportunities for local residents who are looking for employment within our industry, and we're anxious to open that up to anyone interested in that regard. So why Gurnee? And I think it's an important thing that we should touch on, and why this site? And I just want to make sure that we talk a little bit about the specific nature of why we've been attracted to Gurnee and this particular site. Gurnee being a central location in the Lake County area is beneficial to an underserved area of our industry. Commercial trucks come and go through this area, and they aren't served today. There aren't a lot of other franchise dealerships. There aren't a lot of businesses like us, and this is a good way for us to attract a lot of business to not only our area, but to the Village of Gurnee. We will also be able to support McHenry County, Kane County, greater Chicagoland area, as well as the southern Wisconsin area. These are areas that are, as I said, grossly underserved today, and I think will benefit from our involvement. And why this site? So we're all familiar with the site that we're proposing. We're seeking to construct about on a 26-acre parcel. We'll talk more about the facility, but it's situated on the southeast corner of intersection of Milwaukee Avenue and Manchester Drive. We are under contract to purchase the property from Consumers Cooperative Credit Union. We selected this site for a couple reasons. It's convenience and it's access to the interstate. Our customers will use Milwaukee Road and Route 120 interstate access points. That'll ensure that business traffic is contained in this area, not traveling through the center of town or other Gurnee arterial roads. It keeps it contained to these access points. And again, I think it's important to note that the way those roads are configured, it makes it for very simple and easy access both to our site and in and out of the area, enhancing a lot of the commercial trucks that are already driving through that area. I think you'll see that this will be a benefit to them as well. So that's a brief introduction to Trans Chicago, why we're here, a little bit about what we're here to talk about tonight. I'll be back up a little bit to present details about Trans Chicago Truck Group and our operation, and specifically things that we do in our business. But for now, I'd like to turn it over to Kyle Schumacher of Ketone Partners, who's going to take us through a little bit more about the details of the facility itself. Okay?
I had a hard time moving the microphone as low as I needed to go. Welcome this evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Kyle Schumacher. I'm a real estate development consultant working on behalf of Trans Chicago Group. Just want to speak a little bit to specifically the site itself. This is a build-to-suit for Trans Chicago Truck Group. Unlike many speculative buildings that are built in Lake County today, we know who the occupant of the building will be, the owner of the company, and how they operate. We're trying to make sure that both Doug's operation and the neighbors understand that. You've got the gentleman in the room that'll be there on almost a daily basis, living and working in that facility. A couple of things that we're not, and we just want to make sure that we're very clear with the board, that we are not a truck stop, open to the public. We are not a cross-dock freight terminal building, and we're not a distribution center. And very distinctly, our traffic counts and KLOA's data kind of proves that out, but we just want to make sure that we convey that, because I think there's some misinformation out in the public today. The building itself is a combination of office, retail, parts warehouse, and a maintenance repair facility. As Doug mentioned, their plans are to start with 50 new employees, growing to 100 in the first three years, and that includes a mixture of office and retail staff, union service technicians, parts and customer service professionals. The property is located on 25.34 acres with a single point of access from Manchester Road onto Illinois Milwaukee Avenue. We've got a 201-foot setback, building setback to Milwaukee Avenue, a 190-foot setback from Manchester Road to the building, and our site includes parking for 112 automobiles and 233 commercial vehicle parking spaces. The property and the parking lot would be secured, lighted, and paved. And our landscaping plan that was developed by our landscape architect includes 135 new trees, 313 new shrubs, 234 new plants, and 45 percent of the site is impervious, which means that area is planted with grass, plants, and just unpaved. The building itself is 68,140 square feet. Again, the uses inside the building are office, retail, parts warehouse, maintenance, and repair. It's a modern precast facility, so the exterior walls are precast. Some of them are clad with aluminum composite material, and we also have a fairly large amount of glass on our facade. There's a four-color exterior wall paint pattern, and the exterior wall heights range from 33 feet, 30 feet, and 24 feet. This is a black-and-white two-dimensional plan of our building with a breakdown of the interior square footages. There's a fairly large percentage of office, retail, and employee lounge, with 22,000 square feet of parts warehouse, and 27,000 square feet of service area. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Larry Dirzek and Tom Peterman with CAGE and our landscape architect to talk a little bit about their design and how they designed the landscaping to screen the building and the parking from Route 21.
Hi. My name is Larry Glasscock. I'm the landscape architect for the site. We approach this like we do most jobs, looking at the code and looking what the requirements are, and also the neighboring properties. So Gurnee is very specific about what they require as far as intensity of plantings across from any adjacent lesser use. So we have a multifamily residential housing across Illinois Route 21, and we have a retail slash service area across Manchester Drive. Across both those areas, we tried to buffer it heavily with a whole length of plantings from evergreen trees to canopy trees, ornamental trees, large shrubs, all arranged in a density that'll block views and buffer noise from the property to those surrounding sites. As we get closer to the corner of the intersection, it transitions more to a traditional parkway tree and shrub buffering of the parking areas. And there's a little display area that will have some featured vehicles with some perennials, annuals, landscape plantings to really set off the area. As we go further down on the plan or to the southeast, you'll see we're trying to bring back a Tallgrass Prairie in the basin area, let this be a natural area for habitat, and for just bringing back what diversity the site should have on it. So we also got into the fencing, which I'll talk about a little bit in detail. We have basically two enclosed fence areas around the parking. On the west lot, which is in the upper left, that's all ornamental iron fencing, so it's an attractive decorative fencing. On the lot to the east, the western property line facing, or the western line of that edge, will be an ornamental iron with chain leaks surrounding the back, which can't be seen from most of the other properties. So that's the basis for the landscape. As Kyle mentioned, we are at 34 percent permeable space or landscape space for the site, which is a nice number to be at for something this size. And I'll leave it at that and ask if anybody has any questions.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Should we hold off on questions?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Let me just interrupt here for a second. Many of you may have not been to one of our meetings before, but typically what happens is the petitioner makes their presentation. The planning and zoning commissioners will go through a round of questions, and we'll have interaction with the petitioner. I'll then open the floor to the public, and at that time, anyone who wishes to make a comment or ask a question will direct their questions to the board. We'll keep track of the questions. Once everybody's had an opportunity to speak, I'll close the floor of the public. We'll address the questions. We'll have another round of discussions amongst us, and depending on where we're at in the process, may or may not make a recommendation to the village board this evening. Okay? Back to you.
Larry took most of my thunder, but being the civil engineer, I'll stand up and say that we do meet all the stormwater requirements. We actually exceed them. This is an existing basin that was built about 15 years ago, so we've already studied it and made sure that all the storage requirements are met, as well as there's a flood plain, because we are that proximate to the Displayings River. We are outside of the limits for the majority of the project, and where we don't, where we intersect the flood plain, we do provide compensatory storage. And I'll keep it short. I'll put the landscape thing? Oh, I forgot my name. Tom Peterman with CAGE Civil Engineering.
We do have some building elevations on the screen currently. Again, this is a precast concrete building with a fairly large amount of glass facade and aluminum composite material panels. As you can see, we do have two loading docks on the building. They are on the south side of the building, I'm sorry, east side of the building, facing the Ring Road, but those have been screened with a precast screen wall. We also have a recyclable and refuse area on the east side of the building that is also screened on two sides with precast wall, and on the south elevation with an ornamental fence. Our architect prepared this rendering. I am aware that the reflectivity of that glass is probably exceeds the village guidelines, but I can assure you that the glass selected will meet village guidelines. And with that, I'd like to turn it back to Doug to talk about Trans Chicago Group.
Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, you can read the slide, and I think I want to just add a little bit of context to that and offer a little bit more. Obviously, we are in the commercial truck and truck-related vehicle product sales and services. We're a family of commercial truck dealerships. We are a 40-year Illinois-based, family-owned operation. We currently have our third generation involved in the operation now. We have over 450 employees throughout our organization, and we represent three different local unions at our various operations that represent about 50 percent of our staff. We're proud of those relationships, and we look to enhance those going forward in our Gurnee facility. We currently operate facilities in Elmhurst, Illinois, and Shorewood, Illinois, and in Northwest Indiana and Gary, Indiana. We also, in addition, have a 10,000-square-foot new training center that we'll be launching in the next 30 days. We're very excited about that. It just reflects a little bit of how we operate. It's for our technicians, and training our technicians, make sure that they're state-of-the-art trained with all of the latest technology. It's important that we keep up with that, and we have our folks trained, so we have a new training center coming as well. We carry a vast inventory of new Freightliner and Isuzu trucks and a host of all-makes used trucks. Those are the display vehicles that are referenced in our site plan. We also sell Isuzu trucks, capacity yard spotters, and transcraft and Benson aluminum steel, and combination trailers. We provide service for trucks and an extensive mix of parts for most makes of most model trucks. So that's a little bit about who Trans Chicago is. I want to reiterate what Kyle's comments earlier. I think it's important that we stress what we are not. And although we have truck in Trans Chicago Truck Group in our name, we are not a trucking company. We are not a logistics company. We are not a freight forwarder, a warehouse business, or a truck stop. Those bring trailer traffic in the area that I can imagine would be concerning. That is not our business. We are a commercial truck dealership. This is the first of our build design from Greenfield Project, from a standalone ground-up. We're very excited about that opportunity. Our current facilities are, have been acquired or renovated over the years. None of them were buildings that we built, so we're using this as a flagship design for us to take into other areas where we plan on our next growth strategy. We not only hold ourselves to a high standard, it's important also to note that we have high standards and expectations established and required by our manufacturers. Each of those hold us to a high standard in terms of our facilities, cleanliness, lot organization, things that we would like to think we do ourselves, but we also have our franchises looking over our shoulder as well. We're very connected and proud of our relationship to the community. You'll see that we work well with a lot of trade schools, local high schools, community colleges, just to name a few. These are some of the areas that we like to engage. We participate in supporting local youth sport programs. Couple things we like to do from a charitable foundation. We have, what you see in the pictures there are a representation of our parts delivery vans. And once they reach an end of their useful life for us, they still have useful life for someone else. They just may not meet the standard in terms of its mileage or something like that. But what we've done is partnered with local charities, and we're on our eighth donation so far. We take a vehicle that has a lot of useful life. We make it available through a grant process, and we donate that vehicle to willing, enable charities that have the need for the equipment. And then we also donate $5,000 in addition to that for each of those that they can use for maintenance, insurance, lettering for the vehicle. These are just a couple you'll see here that are local. We've worked with Hope Food Pantry in Libertyville. That's the top pictures there. The Prairie Crossing Farms in Grays Lake, and as well as Keeping Families Covered in Waukegan. This is a charity that we found, this entire program is something we found very impactful, and the local community really embraces it. So we look forward to working with that as well. Lastly, as far as it works with Trans Chicago and the community, it's important to note that every one of our operations currently, Elmhurst, Shorewood, Gary, all are either adjacent to or across the street from residential neighborhoods. Each one of those, just like we're proposing here today, have never had a concern, a complaint by a resident in over the 40 years we've been operating. So I think it's important to note that we have similar relationships today that would be present here in our project in Gurnee, and I think it's important to note that we have an outstanding relationship with our neighbors, and we work very well and very closely with the community. A little bit about our operation. New and used truck sales are open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The truck service and parts hours are Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to midnight, and on Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. We are closed for the entire facility on Sunday. We do conduct our repairs inside our facility. That's a restriction or a code for Gurnee, and that's something that's important to note that we certainly comply with. Site lighting also complies with village code, where it reduces to 29 percent of its capacity after one hour of closing. A couple other things that aren't mentioned on the slide, but I think are important to note. We do utilize a triple-basin system that provides a separation of the fluids, oil, gas, and other volatile liquids. The triple-basin system is a key to our operation. It is intended and installed as an interceptor between four drains located within the building and the exiting sanitary sewer. Triple-basin systems are generally included in garages, cleaning plants, several other facilities, where volatile gases can develop, causing potential explosive situations. It's important to note the triple-basin system is clean, pumped, and the contents, if any, and I stress that that's if any, are disposed of periodically by a third-party vendor, all regulated, all registered. So it's something we feel very strongly about, making sure everyone feels comfortable with our operation and how we conduct our business in our service department. We do not store wrecked vehicles on our lot. We do not store vehicles in some state of disrepair with pieces and open hoods and things like that. Everything is conducted within our facility. Parking for the facility is for our new and used trucks that are for sale for our customers, and then for vehicles that are brought into our location for service. There is no long-term parking allowed. There's no long-term parking as part of this proposal, and I want to make sure we're clear, this is not a truck stop. This is not a 24/7 operation. This is a truck dealership. I think what you'll see is, as we get a little bit closer into the details of our traffic studies, we're a business-to-business. We are not a business-to-consumer. Our business is typically conducted where we are going to our clients. If someone needs to buy a vehicle, they don't come in for a test drive, not for the equipment we sell. We go to their facility, their business. We conduct a sales presentation. They don't typically come to us. I won't say they don't ever, but the majority of our business is conducted at the point of our customers' location. That's also true of our parts business. A lot of our parts business is conducted where they order a part over the phone or through the internet. We deliver that to them using our parts vehicles. The people that come in are not, it's not all of our business that's coming to our facility. So it's important that we just outline a little bit of the detail of how our business runs. Our extended hours are used primarily to accommodate service demand. Right now, we have about a three-week lead time on service work. It's not a drop in your vehicle, wait here and get it fixed. There is a small element of that in our business, but it's typically conducted during normal business hours. What you're going to find in our traffic study is the majority of our traffic that enters our site comes in between the hours of a normal operating business, 8, 9 o'clock in the morning, to 5, 6 o'clock at night. Then you see a dramatic fall-off after that. So we'll turn that over in a little bit to Javier from KLOA to talk more about that. I think it's important to note that that limited after-hour visits is addressing the concern of noise, right? Noise after hours is a concern for all of us, and because of the limited traffic, I think it's important that we stress that that also means a limitation on noise in the extended hours of our operation. So let me turn it over to Javier from KLOA, who will talk a little bit more about the traffic study conducted at our sites and what we can anticipate here. Javier? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Javier Milan. I'm a principal with KLOA Incorporated, and we're retaining- and we're retained to conduct the traffic study for their proposed development. The site, as you're aware, is located in the southeast quadrant of Milwaukee Avenue with Manchester Drive. Milwaukee Avenue, it's a north-south principal arterial that generally provides two lanes in each direction, and it is classified as a Class II truck route and carries an annual average daily traffic volume of 27,100 vehicles, of which approximately 4% to 5% of those vehicles are trucks. As was previously mentioned, the proposed development will sell new and used trucks as well as truck parts. This type of facility mostly experiences truck traffic in the form of tractors without trailers, box trucks, and by that I mean the single-unit truck, like typical to a U-Haul truck or a bread truck that you see on the road, and vans. Very few tractors with trailers visit this type of facilities, and when they do, they're typically making a delivery. In order to know what this facility would generate, we conducted a 72-hour survey of the facility in Elmhurst. This type of land use generates very minimal traffic during the peak hours of adjacent street traffic, and by that I mean the 7 to 9, when most of us are going to work, and 4 to 6, when we're coming back from work. And the majority of the traffic is actually passenger vehicles. You can see in there, 84% of the daily traffic, it's actually, whether it's a van, a pickup truck, or a passenger vehicle, approximately 13% are single-unit trucks, and then a 3% are semi-trucks. We further looked at the survey and analyzed it, and it actually indicates that the facility generates most of its traffic during off-peak hours between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. That's when they generate the majority of their traffic, therefore having minimal impact on the peak hours of traffic that I mentioned, whether it's 7 to 9 or 4 to 6. We continue looking at the data, and we saw that a total of 32 semi-trucks were generated on a daily basis, with approximately 5 to 8 of those semi-trucks generated between 6:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. This low additional, or volume of additional truck traffic will have a minimal impact or effect on Milwaukee Avenue. So I would like to point out that the Village of Gurnee actually has conducted a traffic signal warrant study for the intersection of Milwaukee Avenue and Manchester Drive, and the study has determined that a traffic signal will be warranted at that intersection. As such, the Village, the Village is currently pursuing approval from the state, from IDOT, to install a signal at this location. For the purposes of the traffic study, we assume a traffic signal, as that is something that is being pursued. Typical of any traffic study, we have to conduct capacity analysis, and by that I mean we need to analyze these intersections and see how well they are operating, and how well they are going to operate in the future, and whether they need any type of improvements. Based on the results of the capacity analysis for year 2028, all of the study intersections will operate at an acceptable level of service. As such, the intersections have sufficient reserve capacity to accommodate the future traffic volume, which includes the side traffic as well as background growth in the area. Furthermore, when we review the projections, it indicates that the proposed facility is projected to increase the traffic traversing Milwaukee Avenue by 1% or less. So in summary, the proposed TransChicago facility will generate a limited volume of traffic, inclusive of trucks, which will be distributed throughout the day. The facility will result in a small percentage increase in average daily semi-truck traffic, as the facility is projected to generate approximately 32 semi-trucks on a weekday, which again will be distributed throughout the day. The adjacent roadway system can accommodate the traffic estimated to be generated by the proposed facility, and with the provision of a traffic signal at the intersection of Milwaukee Avenue and Manchester Drive, the intersection is projected to operate at level Service A during the peak hours under the year 2028 future conditions. I'll be more than happy to answer questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Hal Frank.
Thank you. Thank you, Javier. My name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Melzer, Pratil, and Stell. I'm pleased to be before you this evening on behalf of the TransChicago Truck Group. I'm going to jump around a little bit in the slideshow. First, as you heard at the outset, we're here from a legal standpoint for a series of requests for relief. The first and foremost is to rezone the property from its current zoning, which is O2 Office Campus District PUD, to the C2 Community Commercial District. The second is to obtain a special-use permit, which is an authorized special-use permit in your zoning ordinance in the C2 district for a motor vehicle dealership. That's the defined term in your ordinance. Third, we're seeking minor sign exceptions for both the onsite signs, the directional signs, a series of wall signs, and the monument sign that's going to be installed, erected at the corner of the property right on Milwaukee Avenue. We've submitted an application for you to consider and approve those as minor sign exceptions, which you can, if, or if you prefer and feel it more appropriate. We've also asked for those departures from your code to be approved as, by way of a special-use permit. We're also seeking certain relief for landscaping that relates primarily to the parking lot, parking lot island landscaping, and then finally, we're seeking approval for site plan approval. As all of you know, all of these requests come with different standards that have to be satisfied, and it's our job to provide you with facts that allow you to make findings of fact that the standards for each one of these requests have been satisfied. That's what we've tried to do this evening with our presentation. Obviously, there, it was somewhat of a synopsis of what we've formally submitted to you. We've submitted a very thick set of documents, which have been on file with the Village for a significant period of time now, and there's a lot more information in there, which, you know, we would like to have incorporated into the public hearing record, but we haven't, we haven't gone through all of that this evening. But I would like to summarize a few key elements, a few key facts, that I think are relevant to the rezoning request and the special-use request. Special-use request, and here's where I'm going to, if I can, jump backwards a little bit here. Yep, I'm going forwards. It's not moving. There you go. Okay. So I'd like to jump back to one of the very first slides. Here. And I know members of the Planning and Zoning Board and people in the audience are familiar with this, but again, here's the original aerial that we showed you of the property. Everybody knows where 120 is and 21 and Manchester Drive. One of the things that we're supposed to establish in the record is the appropriateness of the zoning that we're asking for, the C2 zoning. So that zoning has to be compatible and consistent with both existing zoning in the area and surrounding and existing surrounding land uses. So just for the record, and again, this is in our official submittal, but for the benefit of everybody in the room this evening, I'd just like to summarize. Again, the main property that you're looking at is currently zoned O2 Office PUD. To the north, where the financial services and medical office building is, is also zoned O2. To the, to the east of that, of course, is the fire station, which is zoned in Public Lands District. Then, when you cross over Milwaukee Avenue, you have the Cabo Creek Residential Development, which is zoned R5 PUD. Then the single-story commercial developments on, immediately to the west, that property is also zoned, is zoned C2, C2 PUD, which is consistent with what the applicant here is requesting. And then to the south is this spinny-run attached single-family development, which is also zoned R5 PUD. As you work your way south, going back to the east side of Milwaukee Avenue, the land to the south of us is partially zoned C2, the zoning district that we're asking for, and part of it is zoned as we are, O2 PUD. That property to the south is about 12, consists of approximately 12 acres. It's improved with older buildings that are devoted to various uses, residential, office, and commercial. And then, of course, to the east of the property is a large area of open space, wetlands, floodway, wetlands, floodplain, and the Displanes River. So we believe that the C2 request and the commercial use that's being proposed is consistent with existing zoning in the area and with existing uses in the area, especially when one takes into account the significant setbacks that you heard about this evening, the landscaping, buffering that you heard, fencing, the protections on lighting that you heard Doug Casey talk about, or maybe it was Kyle. So we do think that as it's proposed to be developed, the requested zoning is a reasonable request, and the proposed use is compatible. Another thing that you're asked to consider when you're undertaking an evaluation of a rezoning request is how long the property's been vacant, as currently zoned. And this property was zoned for office use in 2008, so it has remained vacant for almost 15 years now, and of course, it was vacant before then. And needless to say, the market for new office development has not gotten any better over the last few years. As you, some of you will recall, and this site, another factor for you to consider in your code and under Illinois law, is how our request fits in with your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan still shows this as office, but it also talks about development of land in a way that furthers the public health, safety, and welfare, which we think, obviously, this, we obviously think this proposal does. Some of you will recall that I was here before you not that long ago on a request for another parcel of land right up the street on Milwaukee Avenue for what was then requested and has subsequently been approved by the Village for a new multifamily apartment complex on a similar parcel, similar in the sense that it's on Milwaukee Avenue, and it was zoned office for years and years and years. We had discussions about how that land had been zoned and left vacant for almost 40 years, I think. And eventually, not that long ago, the Village did amend their comprehensive plan to make it possible to be developed, that parcel, with multifamily use. So there's somewhat of a recent history of the Village acknowledging, in their comprehensive plan, the inappropriateness of some of the lands that have been designated for office development. We think this parcel, again, fits into certain goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and that it's another candidate for consideration with a use that's other than the office that's contemplated by the plan. In fact, this property, before it was rezoned to the O2 district for, in 2008, as I just indicated, it was actually zoned in the commercial service district for, you know, exactly this kind of use. So this is kind of bringing it back to, to what it once was. In terms of the special-use request, the key consideration, in my opinion, when you're evaluating a request for a special-use permit, is the public need for that particular use in this location. And you heard Doug Casey talk about where their existing facilities are, and in the materials we've presented to you, we've indicated that this particular facility is really going to satisfy a significant market need for this use for Lake County clients and customers, McHenry County, Southern Wisconsin. Doug talked to you about Shorewood and Elmhurst and Gary, and so, you know, we think that this fits in perfectly and satisfies that legal standard of providing, satisfying a need and serving the public convenience. I guess, lastly, I was just going to focus a little bit on the signage, which we didn't talk about a lot tonight, but we have all that material submitted to you, and we're happy to talk about the signage. We think that, and again, I want to just clarify that what Javier Milan was talking about, the Village did a traffic warrant signal for the installation of this signal at Manchester and Milwaukee some time ago, and at the time it was commissioned, it was determined that the warrants were not met. You have to meet one of, I think it's 10 or 11 warrants, right, that IDOT has before you can, you, the government, local government, or the county or state can install a signal. The warrants weren't met. There is a fire station there, of course, and you have traffic coming out on the opposite side of Milwaukee, residential traffic, and I think the, the Village has made it very clear that they, they are eager to see this signal installed, and this use, it's been concluded, will actually trigger the warrants and make it possible for the Village to finally move forward with the installation of that traffic signal. So I mention that because whether it's the request for rezoning, or it's the request for the approval of the special-use permit for a motor vehicle dealership, one of the key considerations is the extent to which the public health, safety, and welfare is advanced. So we think for a lot of reasons you heard tonight, most notably, this traffic signal installation and the benefits to local traffic and avoiding congestion in the roadways is a key benefit to the public health, safety, welfare. Now, I'm going to, if I can, jump ahead to some concluding remarks. We think that the project as a whole will produce a number of community benefits that further the public health, safety, and welfare. You heard Tom Peterman talking about, talking about stormwater management improvements. You heard, as I just said, Javier talk about the signal. You heard Doug Casey talk about environmental controls they're going to have in their operation, lighting controls, significant landscaping benefits. But you also heard Doug talk about the financial benefits, significant real estate taxes being generated for the Village and local school districts and the park district, as opposed to what there is right now, which is taxation of vacant land, significant sales tax opportunities for the Village of Gurnee, new employment you heard about, training, participation in the community that Doug Casey talked about. You know, all in all, we think that this facility will be a tremendous addition to the Village generally and to its commercial tax base in particular. And that really concludes our presentation, and we're happy to entertain any questions that members of the board might have or members of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who'd like to start? Dave?
Thank you. I guess I'm going to start off by just offering a few brief comments, and really not any direct questions at the moment, because there's, there's a lot to take in here, and there's a lot of information that we've been, we've been given tonight, covering a lot of different topics. I think my overall first initial feeling on this is concerned, and again, when I review the standards that we're asked to measure this against, I might respectfully disagree with the petitioner's position on part of this. I might say yes, that commercial is appropriate for Milwaukee, but I think when we, when we take a look at the comprehensive plan, and I put a lot of weight in the comprehensive plan, by the way. I mean, we, as a Village, worked on this for quite a bit of time, and there was a lot of stakeholders that all had input into this process, and it didn't happen overnight. It was, there was public input, this board, the Village Board, our outside consultant all contributed, contributed to this, and after that all washed out, this parcel still had this overall designation and vision, because this comprehensive plan we use as a tool, as a template or roadmap or vision for how we see our Village developing and unfolding over time, okay? So I, for one, take that seriously, and so I'm not real quick to make changes just because we're here today, all right? So I might say that this parcel has commercial value to it, for sure, but I don't know in the vision, again, if we saw 26 acres of commercial with this use and this intensity of a use, okay? And this, again, is just what I'm asked to do to measure against the standards of whether I think there is a public benefit to this. So we can, we can probably debate as to what the future is of, of office or office campus use. Maybe there's something in the middle that might ultimately work. I don't know if it's a year from now. I don't know if it's 10 years from now. Just purely from a zoning standpoint, I don't know if I'm in favor of 26 acres of commercial, because commercial paints a big brush. I mean, I mean, if you talk about commercial being across the street, that's a very low intensity commercial use, but still categorized the same as a commercial use versus a truck dealership that runs an 18-hour-a-day service department from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, okay? So they say that they want to respect the peace and the quiet and the tranquility of the neighborhood when they're outside of their business hours. So that means between, to me, potentially between midnight and 6:00 a.m., they'll respect those quiet times. But they've publicly stated here today that they have an 18-hour business day, okay? So they can state that most of the traffic will come in, you know, after rush hour morning or before rush hour in the afternoon, but they're open for business, which means it can come, okay? And it's truck traffic. So whether we're talking about semis, or we're talking about box trucks, they make road noise, okay? So depending on which way the wind's blowing, if it's coming out of the east, everybody who lives west of this property will be subject to whatever potential noise is coming off of Milwaukee Avenue or off the site. Now, I, for one, I don't live off of Milwaukee Avenue, I live on the other side of town, right? So this is technically not my backyard, but my backyard is Route 45, which is another fairly busy, highly, highly traveled road, and I live several blocks, and I can hear a lot of what comes off of Milwaukee, or Route 45, okay? So this building has 10 service bays that face to the west. So I don't know what kind of noise might come out of that on a hot summer day if the doors are open, running pneumatic tools, we're running diesel, diesel trucks, you know, so I, I just, my initial thoughts were respectfully, I might disagree with some of the proposal that this might not have some detrimental benefit. And while, while they've identified the business need to the public and identified public as Lake County, McHenry County, Southern Wisconsin, I live in the village of Gurnee, and I'm on the planning and zoning board for the village of Gurnee, and so, to me, I, I look at my primary concern is the benefit to the public of the village of Gurnee. So I'm not quite convinced yet that that standard is being met. So I know there's a lot of people that probably want to have input as well, so I'm gonna go ahead and defer any more from that point.
Thanks, thank you. Edwin?
I agree with Mr. Nordendorf on a lot of the points. Some things, maybe not so much, the traffic hours, I think, for this type of operation are probably better than some, especially if it was another apartment complex or condos or something that would bring traffic at the same hours as peak hours for the rest of the area. So that is a plus. I'd rather see this stay as open space, but it's gonna get developed eventually, so there're not gonna be that view across 21 from the other side forever. I don't know about 26 acres of trucks, though. One thing I was looking at is, you've got a really nice setback. One of the things about a special use permit that gives us some leeway is that we can ask for concessions, and I would imagine that's one of the reasons why we have a 75-foot setback. Is there any berm in that area? You wanna wait till later for them to ask that?
No, no, as per our custom, I think, when we're going through our rounds of questions, we need immediate feedback.
In some of the presentations we get, we get a side view of the landscaping, and that I did not see, so.
Yes, there will be berming where we can do it. There is a significant elevation drop from Milwaukee near the intersection, but as it levels off, there'll be more berming.
Okay, there is a berm there now, is it going to be, only as a portion, I think it's where they just dumped some dirt, but there is a berm, is it going to be that high? Can you tell me how high the berm is supposed to be?
We don't have the actual dimension, the height, yet, but there will be at least that height.
Okay. I realize that there is a drop-off there, so you're down from 21. The problem is, the other side of the street is much higher, so you're looking down on top of this giant parking lot full of trucks and other vehicles, and there's no screening with inside of the parking lot. And I do understand why you're, you don't want that, because you've got these big trucks going through there, they'll be knocking the trees down. I like the fact that you preserved a lot of the trees around the, the drive behind it, because that will block off that back parking lot somewhat. And they're fairly well-established trees, so that's, that's nice. But up front, I was across the street this morning, just looking out over there, and it's beautiful right now. And without that berm, you know, alls you're gonna see is trucks. And some of the people that are up on the hill there actually have their windows looking out over that. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be something, whether it's apartments or office buildings or whatever, it's not going to be the same view forever, I know that. So anyway, that's, one of the questions I had was about the berm, but you don't have a, a plan for that yet?
No, we, we've investigating adding berms for most of it, it just depends on the elevation change. As we get closer to the intersection, there's about a 10-foot drop, but on the wet, as we move south along 21, the berm becomes larger.
Right, and I realize you have a display area there on the corner, so you wouldn't want a berm in front of that, of course. You want people to be able to see that. A question, I don't know who this goes to, will that traffic light be installed before the, the project is completed?
So if and when this project moves, so, back up, when the village installed the fire station at the location, we anticipated a traffic signal going in. The state of Illinois issued a line item grant in the governor's budget for funding that traffic signal. Unfortunately, IDOT did not give us the permit because we wouldn't, didn't meet the, the warrants for the, the traffic signal, basically that the cross-traffic, there wasn't enough cross-traffic to warrant a signal stopping the main line 21. With this development, we believe that there will be enough cross-traffic to warrant the signal. The grant is still active. IDOT needs a imminent development before they will issue the permit. So if and when this project goes forward and the developer purchases the property, they get the zoning approval, at that point, we would submit the warrant study back to IDOT. We anticipate IDOT giving us the permit and then constructing the project next spring, summer.
Okay.
Prior to the opening of this development.
Right, so if this got approved, the traffic light would be put in before the project was complete, I would suppose?
Correct.
Okay. There was mention in here about cross-access easement to the south, and I don't see anywhere in here where they show that road being extended to get out there. Is that supposed to happen? You know where I'm talking about, the directly across from the entrance to, the housing tract there, Heather Ridge?
It, it Displains, whatever.
Is that what it is? Displains?
Displains Court or Displains?
It's...
The word Displains, is that the name of the...
I believe the, the reference to the cross-access easement was for maintenance operations of the water main and some of the sanitary sewer along the ring road.
Oh, okay.
We don't have, I don't think we have the real estate or, Hal, do you want to speak
The, the access easement has been known about working with staff for a while, it's just not shown on the plans yet. This, this project doesn't contemplate development of that south parcel, and, but it's understood that these plans need to be or can be revised to show the future cross-access. We've already talked to staff from a legal standpoint about preparing a document that allows for that, but at this point, there's no proposed new development for the property to the south. The concept of cross-access easement is not an issue.
Okay, but if that product, property to the south was developed, there would be cross-access put in there?
There'd be, we're, we're proposing a connection to, I mean, we understand that eventually there has to be a connection to Displains Court, and that there would, yeah, basically be the ability for people to go either way.
Yeah, that worries me, because if the trucks could come out there and turn left onto 21 going south, then that would almost require another signalized intersection. I can't imagine them, if a left turn wasn't allowed there, that probably wouldn't be so bad, but if there was eventually a left turn allowed out of there and your traffic could go out that direction, I'm not sure they would choose that, but if somebody did, it wouldn't be a, a good thing, in my opinion.
Understood. Tom Peterman wants to address that, I understand the concern.
Just going back to that comment on being a left turn, if we have the signalized intersection at Manchester and then the one that's just directly to the south, there wouldn't be the ability to have a left turn out of that access, it would have to be a right-in, right-out access at Displains Court.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think that was all my questions. I did have one other question, I guess. You mentioned that this was, there was a need for this. What is the closest other dealership like this? Is there something close? I know it's not yours, but...
So if I could ask clarification, are you talking about the same brands? Are we talking about different brands?
Same type of dealership, where they service trucks?
Well, there are a lot of independents, so it's hard to say that, because there are a lot of truck dealerships that aren't franchised and, and that do a lot of the same things we do. They may not have the standards that we have to our buildings and, and operation, but the closest franchised operation would be, I, I don't know exactly, but I would guess it to be up near the Wisconsin state line in Wadsworth.
Okay. All right. Russell Road.
I just wanted to express my appreciation for the presenters addressing the concern about the community in Elmhurst and the other areas, so that's very important to, to address. Question, basic question, the hours from 5:00 to midnight, how busy are you during that time and what's the need to be open so late?
Thank you for the question. As I tried to explain in our presentation, the hours of operation for us are almost as a matter of accommodating the amount of work we have. We can only have so much shop space for our technicians to work, so we spread out that work over that time period. The amount of traffic that comes in or drop-off for additional work after the hours of 5:00, 6:00 o'clock really don't exist. We don't write repair orders, and that's the process of someone bringing in a vehicle, because we don't do work on demand. We don't have the capacity to have somebody come into our facility, drop their vehicle off, and have it worked on right away. So the, the after-hours is really just accommodating the amount of work we have and the space we have to maximize our technicians on our shop floor.
So technically, you're not open to the public during that time?
We are. We, our parts department is open, so we may have some of that passenger van or, or vehicles come in for parts, but again, as the traffic study would show you, there really isn't a lot of traffic that comes into our facilities after 6:00 of any type.
Okay, that was my question, if you had those numbers.
Okay. Dean?
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, you mentioned in the traffic studies, they've got like 97% of the vehicles are passenger vehicles or passenger cars and maybe box trucks. And so, and I think I read there was like about 1,300 vehicles. How many of those are not your employees? And I understand it's a round trip, so about 650 or so, but how many of those are your trucks entering and leaving the facility on a daily basis?
Excuse me, if I understood the question right, you were talking about the daily trips, you know, that were shown in the traffic studies, is that correct?
1,300, yes.
Yeah, so again, that's total, in and out, so don't, don't think about 1,300 going in, that's, that's divided. So typically, if you have somebody going in, you have them going out. So we're gonna round at 650. In terms of how many of those are employees, I would have to look into our survey to see how many of those were employees. I really couldn't give you the answer right now, but again, that's all-inclusive, that's employees, deliveries, you know, people that are dropping off their, their truck, people that are coming in to buy parts and just leaving, so a trip is a trip, so we cannot just say, oh, I mean, then, I'm not gonna count that one, so, so that's all-inclusive. I can certainly get back to you with some more of that, but we would have to actually go and look at the video again and just see how many were employees and how many were not. You might have some information?
Can I, can I ask you one more question? Just because you're, you're the one on the traffic. Did I hear right that this was only an increase in traffic on 21 by 1%?
It's about 1% to 2% when you take the volume that they're generating, inclusive of everything, trucks and passenger vehicles. With the volume of traffic that is on Milwaukee Avenue and at intersections, it comes up to about 1% to 2%.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I would add that that study was conducted at our Elmhurst facility, that is our corporate headquarters and our largest operation. It has about 200 between corporate staff as well as our location, dedicated location-specific people at that facility. We have about 200 people, so that would be 400 trips of that based on that employee count. We also have our parts delivery vans, that's our largest parts delivery, that's our largest location. So that is our heaviest traffic count by far.
Is that about the same size, 68,000?
No, these facilities are about the same, but, but what we're seeing is the density of our customer base is in that area, is what contributes to that being our largest facility, as well as having our corporate staff located there. So all of our corporate people, which would not be located at the Gurnee facility, are located in that building. That adds trip counts because of the additional employees.
And then, so maybe you can take this, because there's a, there's also a request for the sign variance, and the rationale was that the sign needed to be larger, because you would have vehicles of a semi-truck size that may need to see the sign. If 97% of the vehicles are not that size, why would a variance in the sign be...
I, I think, I think you, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. The, the variance is, it's important to distinguish its height, not size, so we're not asking for a larger sign, we're asking for a taller sign, and the, the reason for the taller sign is just for the fact that those few trucks that we do have come to our facility, it's important that they have the ability to see where they're going, get off the, a road. If they pass our facility, then it's a bit of a challenge for them to turn around, and I think that becomes a very difficult situation. So the request was made to allow people to have clear visibility to that sign, so they can access our facility as quickly and safely as possible.
Yeah, I think it's hard to miss a 68,000-square-foot facility, but...
It is lower there, I, I understand your point, it is lower there by about 10 feet below grade, so perhaps there's some forest screening just to the north of the office complex there as you're coming southbound. I understand your point, but it, it, it could be an issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I generally share Mr. Nordendorf's thoughts with regards to the comprehensive use plan and the contemplation of that, and certainly, I could, I was not a part of the drafting of the plan, but I could see in the future that this may need to be revisited in terms of the use, as I'm well aware that office may be, you know, solely on its way out. But I would definitely want to give this a lot of thought here, as well as maybe in the future in terms of the, the size and scale of the, the facility and what we're looking at respectfully, knowing that there's gonna be a lot of work, and there has been a lot of work done to the landscaping plan for this, to try to make it, you know, fit in a space where it's just a big, it's a large building. And again, I don't know the size of your other facility, if this will be a flagship for you in terms of size and scale and scope, but there are 10 bays facing 21, which the plans could easily be a distribution center. I get it, I know that it's not, you know, I know what you, the intent is, but it could easily be that for a future use if, if this were not there, which generates a lot, a lot of other, a lot of other angst, I would say. That's all for me right now.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not exceptionally troubled by the, the request to rezone to C2, because it's, it's surrounded, I don't know, almost all, all sides by C2 in nature. Sometimes I, I struggle with size and, and the appearance of size for perspective, and whether staff or, or the petitioner can help me out on this. How tall is this building compared to the fire station?
So this building would be comparable height to the main garage part of the fire station, not the host...
station, not the host tower, not the residential portion, but comparable in size to the main garage part.
Okay, and that's the part that's most visible from Manchester?
Correct.
Correct, okay. In terms of square footage, 68,000 square feet, sounds like a lot of square footage. How does that compare to the existing single-story buildings that are currently occupied over there?
You always ask good questions.
Yeah, I try.
Comparison, the new Restaurant Depot that's going up by Holiday Inn.
Okay.
That one, I believe, is 45,000 square feet.
Okay.
Trying to think of something that's around 70,000 square feet.
How large is the strip mall across from this development?
Substantially smaller. It's probably 12,000 to 15,000 square feet for the strip mall. The...
Isn't the new car dealership off of Northridge Plaza about 60,000?
I would say it was 55,000 to 60,000, so just a little bit wider.
I didn't catch the beginning. Tracy, was that the new Anthony?
The new car dealership off of Northridge Plaza?
Okay.
Is around 55,000, I believe, 55,000?
And that's even a more dramatic grade change between the properties to the south of that particular development, correct?
No, this has a pretty significant grade change. This sits down...
It's in the same ballpark, though?
Is it?
I would say it's probably 10, 10 feet below Grand Avenue grade.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking the residential to the south. Yep.
Yep, okay.
True.
All right. With regard to the sales process, you mentioned that oftentimes, or the majority of the time, you're going to the client. Is that true for the used vehicles as well?
All vehicle sales are typically done that way, yes.
Okay.
Now, if there is someone who comes in to buy a vehicle, and it does happen from time to time, the vast majority of our vehicles are delivered to the customer. If people are gonna come onsite to buy something, it would be a used vehicle, typically not a new vehicle. But again, new and used vehicle purchasers are businesses. We're business-to-business, and we go to their location to solicit, to make proposals, to deliver the equipment. It's very rarely done onsite.
Okay.
And I would like to clarify one point about the facility size. At 68,000, that includes all internal second stories and offices. The footprint itself is 59,000 square feet.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And that represents 6%.
I didn't realize that.
I didn't realize that either.
And that also represents 6% of the total site of the 26 acres. That 59,000 footprint of the facility represents 6% of the total site.
Okay. Okay. And how is sales tax revenue determined when the transaction is consummated off-site?
It's determined at the point where the product is delivered from. So, in this case, regardless of where we go, it's generated in Gurnee.
Where was... Excuse me, ma'am? Okay, thank you. Okay, so it would be Gurnee, not the...
The sales tax would be generated in, for the Village of Gurnee. So, all our sales tax that we pay to Illinois is paid through our Gurnee license.
Okay. Okay. And we talked a little bit about that existing road that kind of doesn't really serve any real purpose. Is there any concern that customers will see that Displanes Court and turn into their anticipation of visiting your site and then kind of be stuck in a dead-end situation?
Again, I think the signage helps, so I think having a sign there that's visible. We have directional signage on Manchester. I, that connection point at Displanes is not contemplated as part of this property. It's, we have no ability to connect to that road because we don't own that. That's not a part of this parcel that we're acquiring. That is part of the property to the south, and that's not being contemplated as part of this plan. So, if someone does turn into Displanes Court, could that happen? I suppose it could. I think with the proper signage, we should be okay.
I'm just looking at the materials that arrived with our packet. On the very first page of this thing, is the highlighted, the yellow highlighted boundary, is that the site?
Yes.
So, it does touch the curve of Displanes Court, doesn't it?
It does touch the public right-of-way of Displanes Court, yes.
Okay, so the connection could be made there.
Could be made. It'd have to be permitted through the village, but yes, it could be made.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all my questions for now. Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna open the floor to the public.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
So, just thinking about the operation, so you have allotted now about 233 spaces for the vehicles. So, in your mind, and I'm sure you've done the study, what percentage of your operation will be sales versus service? So, the reason why I'm asking is if you have, you know, I know you have a three-week lead time right now for service. So, you could have 100 vehicles back there waiting to be serviced, and you're servicing them all the way up until midnight. So, they're firing up, right, and being pulled into the service bay facility at any given point from, you know, 5:00, I'm sorry, 6:00 a.m. until midnight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, again, how much of that do you think would be sales versus service?
So, I would, of the 233 parking spots or so, I would break that down to be, you know, at most 100 service and the remainder to be new and used vehicles for display and sale purpose. I think it's important to note that our repairs are typically, you know, in excess of four, five hours. So, it's, this isn't a car dealership where they're fixed in an hour, so we're constantly moving vehicles in and out. Again, will vehicles be brought in perhaps at 7, 8 o'clock? That very well could be the case, but it's brought in, doors are closed, repairs performed. But the vast majority of our repairs, being that extended amount of time, right, there isn't a lot of need to bring vehicles in and out because they're extended repair. They take longer to fix. So, it's not the frequency that you would see at an automotive store, but the potential does exist that vehicles would be brought in at some point on our extended hours.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond to one question that a number of board members asked before we opened for the Florida public comment, if I could, just real quickly, and I'm not, I'm not saying this to try to persuade the three of you that made a comment expressing concern about the comprehensive plan, but I just would like to give you some additional food for thought on that issue. The comprehensive plan, which I appreciate that the village did spend a lot of time putting that together, it was adopted officially by, in October of 2020, which means it was being substantially worked on and put together pre-COVID. And again, as I said during my remarks, the world has changed significantly, and, you know, I had a prominent Chicago office developer at a hearing a few weeks ago indicate that, you know, it's gonna be years before new Class A office space is built because it costs like $300 a foot to do that, and there's so many office buildings and campuses on the market right now that you can buy for a tenth of that or 15 or 20% of that price. And again, not that the Village of Gurnee or any of you need to be following the lead of other communities, but again, it's not news that office campuses and new office developments on the near horizon are not likely to happen. You may be familiar with one or more of these projects, but as you know, Allstate just announced it's closing and selling its campus in what is now Glenview, and that's going to become a warehouse, you know, operation, distribution facility right off 294 at Willow Road. Baxter has indicated they're closing, vacating office space in Deerfield. Walgreens has indicated they're closing office space in Deerfield. The Village of Itasca, not that long ago, rezoned a portion of very prominent Class A office park, Hamilton Lakes, for a new multifamily development. Just a few weeks ago, I was in front of the Village of Downers Grove that considered a similar proposal to rezone a piece of vacant office land in the, again, Class A first-class office development, the Esplanade that some of you may be familiar with at 355 and Butterfield Road. And in that particular case, and again, not that this has to dictate what the Village of Gurnee does, but in that particular case, the Village Council unanimously recommended that that vacant parcel be rezoned for multifamily use, recognizing that the prospect of new office development on that site, even though it's in the middle of a Class A office development, is probably 20 years away. So, I understand the desire to follow the comprehensive plan, which designates the property for office, but I think, and I appreciate the fact that several of you said, that you appreciate that maybe it isn't appropriate to have a 26-acre office campus here, and we should look at some other uses. But again, I would ask you to think about what those other uses might be, if not a commercial use like this, which generates sales taxes for the village, because as I think Board Member Faff, you said, you know, I don't think you want to see 26 acres of multifamily housing here because it creates traffic that's gonna be completely competing with the existing residential traffic in the area. My guess would be that the village wouldn't be as eager to have a logistics facility or a warehouse operation, which has now been, you know, a distribution facility, been approved for that Allstate campus. So, I think I would just respectfully ask that you consider, if not this use for this property under your comprehensive plan, which of course is just a guidance tool. It's not the same as your zoning ordinance, which is the law of the land in Gurnee, but the comprehensive plan is just a guidance tool. I would just ask you to give some further thought to then, if not this, then what? Thank you.
Before I open the floor to the public, I do have one more question from, for the representative from KLA. Hypothetically, if a 70,000-square-foot office building were put on that site, what would typical traffic counts be?
I don't have on top of my head what I can do. A quick search on my phone for the rates, and I can give you that if you give me a few minutes, you know?
Okay, why don't you do that while we're opening the floor?
And again, the size, just so I can check it again. You said how much for the square footage?
Roughly 70,000 square foot, roughly the size of the proposal.
I promise you, I'll do that as soon as I get there.
All right. At this point in time, I'll open the floor to the public.
Mr. Sula?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out one other thing.
Yes.
Regarding the comp plan, this property does have dual designation for the comp plan, so the front is office, but remember that the back part is, I think, industrial mixed use. So, just keep that in mind. It's not 100% office.
Okay, thank you.
And that that industrial mixed use does contemplate kind of a mix of different types of uses, including some commercial, so.
Okay. Good point. Thank you. At this point, I'll open the floor to the public. I ask that you use the microphone in the center of the room, state your name and address for the record, and as I mentioned before, address your questions to us. Once everybody has had a chance to ask a question, I'll close the floor to the public, and then we'll do the best we can addressing the comments and questions that come before us. And please, just in the interest of time, if your question's already been asked, kind of just defer. All right, thank you. So... And feel free to line up behind each other, too.
Might as well start out. My name's John Duncan. I live in Spiny Run, just across the way. Maybe backing up to the words from the president of the proposed facility, he wants to attract more truck traffic to Gurnee. That would be a question that I think we all have to really understand if that's what we want. I look at it in five areas: ESG, financial, environmental, traffic, and building. For ESG, I question, does Gurnee have an environmental, social, and governance document? State of Illinois has one. Have we developed one? That's really to look at, focus on preserving the world, focus on preserving the land, the open space. Do we need to add more facilities and always fill every piece of open land? Is this a green building? Are we looking at smart growth? A truck facility like this, if I understood the wording or the numbers, it's 1,300 vehicles in and out. Was that a correct statement in a day?
Was there?
Is that a correct statement?
It's 650 in, 650 out.
Okay, so 1,300. That's a pretty high-carbon footprint. There's light pollution coming from all the lights in that parking lot. So, then when I look at the financial, has the city done a pro forma on this? What kind of money is expected to be generated? The city's budget looks to be about $94 million. How much additional will come in from this? I don't know. Is that number known? Or I would ask an answer for that. I understand that this will generate taxes based on the research I've been able to come up with, of about $300,000 to $500,000 a year. I could be way off. That's what probably collectively the group in Spiny Run pays in taxes to the city. So, from a number standpoint, I question, what's the pro forma? What's the income? Environment, putting this right next to medical offices. How many people in a one-mile radius are affected? The president's city lived in Heather Ridge. Were Heather Ridge people informed of this? I understand a letter just went to a half-mile, or excuse me, wrong statement, 500-foot radius from this facility or some pinpoint of where this is going. So, I'm saying, or I'm guessing, that a large population of affected people were not informed. Traffic, I think we've answered. I've heard most of those things answered, but I had read that there's 345 spaces. One of the council members said 200, I think, 33. I think total, there's 345 spaces if I go back and look, because I spent some time poring over the documents this afternoon. At a truck location, trucks idle constantly. I have a large Class A motorhome with a 450-horsepower diesel Cummins engine. I go into truck places, I go into a freightliner chassis facility, and the trucks sit and idle. No matter what said, they're sitting there for a period idling. I would encourage any of you to sit outside of a truck facility. The freightliner dealer closest is about 35 minutes north on the south side of Milwaukee, right off the 94. I'd encourage any of you to sit there for an hour, look at the traffic coming in and out. And on the building, is there a paint spray booth going in? Is there a dynamometer that's going in to test engines, to test vehicles? Runoff from the cement, there's gonna be a large cement and asphalt parking area. What about that runoff? I understand you've looked at, looked at that and not concerned. And also, there's 26 truck doors, so there's gonna be 26 vehicles inside at any given time, and we talked about that, I think. So, I think I've hit my questions, and that's what I'd like to at least point out from my perspective. And one last comment, as I drove out of our parking area or our development tonight and came out to Milwaukee Avenue, looking straight across was darkness. If this proposed facility goes in, we'll be looking at pure lights and light pollution. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kat York. I live in Heather Ridge and have for the last 25 years or so. And I too have concerns about the light pollution. We are out every day walking the dog three times a day, and right now, we hear in 120 or 30-minute walk, three ambulances go by because of the number of emergency vehicles that use 21 and/or 120 to get to the hospital. With this increased kind of volume of traffic, I think that's going to be interrupted. I mean, it's not just the Gurnee emergency. It's all of the emergency vehicles that come from the west side of the county and from the north side of the county. And I think that when you look at the drawings, they always look so beautiful with so many developed trees, and what we get are little bushes and immature trees. The upkeep is not as good as we would like. I don't, I have a problem with this being redistributed as commercial.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Kwiatkowski, my husband George is...
Ma'am, could you get closer to the microphone?
Pardon?
Could you get closer to the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Susan Kwiatkowski, I'm also in Spiny Run. I'm right on Bryan Court, so I'm one of the people that's directly affected by this business, and I have a lot of concerns, but before I, I just want to read a statement, I would like to ask a couple of questions for them. The signage that's been recommended, is that all going to be lit, or is it just going to be signage that you can see from the street? Don't know about that. You've mentioned, they've mentioned the public need in Gurnee. I don't understand what the public need is in Gurnee for trucking. We live in a residential neighborhood, I don't understand that. I know we have a lot of traffic that comes down Milwaukee Avenue. It sounds like from, from the, the presentation they gave us, they immediately told us about all of this additional business that's going to be coming in from all these other towns, so they've already increased what they're saying to us. I don't know how many, but they're, they're already telling us it's going to be more than what they're, they're giving us today. I also think I heard correctly that the service bays are going to face west, and if that's true, that leads directly into Spiny Run. So, any of that noise is going to come straight into Spiny Run, which is a big concern, especially with how many they have. So, those are my questions, but I also want to make a statement. We moved here in '79, and we lived in Heather Ridge for a long time, and we were very lucky, very fortunate to be able to buy a home in Spiny Run and call that our home. We bought it knowing it was a residential community, and it's not an industrial community, it's not a commercial community. There's some businesses, but it's not commercial. We've, 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 over the years, we've noticed a huge increase in noise level for traffic. I, I can hear every truck, every ambulance, every fire engine, every car, every motorcycle that goes up and down Milwaukee Avenue 24/7. If I have windows open, I hear it. If I, if I sit outside on the deck, I hear it. It's actually difficult at times to hear people out on the deck. That's going to increase, and it's going to be even more difficult. So now, now they're, they're asking again to make this an industrial park, and they want it rezoned for this, they want it rezoned for lighting, they want it rezoned for many things. I'm looking, I'm thinking, why are we not, why is the village or this company not looking at industrial areas for them, that are already established for businesses of this nature? Why make it this area? Why put the, the problem onto the residents across the street? And it's not just Spiny Run, it's Heather Ridge, too. And I, I hope that one of the things you consider, too, is crime. I don't know how much crime we're talking about that could happen in that neighborhood with, with everything going on. It's, it's just, these are the concerns I have. I'd like to make sure that you consider all of the things that are being asked by them, and consider the residents, who are the ones that have lived here for so long in your community.
Hi, Dr. Norbert Charles Bora. I live in Spiny Run. It's a nice, fine community, in fact, if a house goes up for sale, it doesn't take but a week to sell. That won't happen anymore. I've got some several concerns. Number one, if shrubs were used for sound control, the tollways wouldn't have 20-foot walls, they'd have shrubbery. Be a heck of a lot cheaper, number one. Number two, we're not impressed with your donations to organizations. We know how that works, you buy a truck, you depreciate it tax-wise till it's no longer depreciable, you donate to somebody and you get a double tax write-off. We know how that works, so we're not impressed with that. The one thing I am concerned about is the traffic from station number three, which according to John Kavanaugh, our chief, is now the most active station in all of Gurnee. It's not uncommon to see 14, maybe 15, emergency vehicles go out of there on a regular basis. What is to stop them from creating a traffic jam where these people do not get to a site on time? That's my concern. So if you decide to let them have it, I suggest, I strongly suggest that you and the board also consider moving that station to a location where it can be used and used safely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
My name is Regina Keller, and I live in Spiny Run. One of the neighbors wasn't able to make it tonight, but she wrote a letter and I'd like to read it. To whom it may concern, I am Diane Sickles, that's the neighbor, residing at Kristen Court. The subdivision called Spiny Run is located on the west side of Route 21, directly across from the proposed trucking business, to be located on the east side of Route 21. While I am very much in favor of the growth of business and wish this business success, there are many industrial areas nearby more appropriate for this type of business. For the following reasons noted below, I am adamantly against this business being located at this proposed location, directly across the road from a peaceful residential area. Her first is 21 is heavily traveled, and the additional truck traffic will add additional risk of danger to the homeowners in the area. Number two, the value of the home own, homes and homeowners' investments will be diminished greatly, which will impact our economic welfare as residents of Gurnee. Three, the zoning was set as it is for a purpose, and the zoning is appropriate as is. The lighting will be a nuisance, and the noise will be disruptive to the Gurnee residents. Number four, for those of us who appreciate wildlife and the natural beauty of this area, which is not an industrial area, this will not be an enhancement, but will destroy the beauty of this area that is appreciated and valued. Please do consider the residents of this area and locate the business in a more appropriate industrial area. There are vacant industrial sites of similar size nearby that are a better fit for this business. Thank you, and I agree with a lot of what she said.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Thompson, and I'm reading a letter for someone that would like me to read for her. My name...
Could you get closer to the microphone?
Her name is Vicki Thetos, and she lives at 805 Bryan Court in Gurnee, in Spiny Run. And her prop, I'm going to ad lib a little as I go here, her property is the very first one on the corner, and her back deck would look straight out at their development. So she's, you know, impacted a lot here. She believes the rezoning of the property located across the street, going from business to commercial, would be detrimental to the health and well-being of her family and her neighbors. The excess traffic, noise, and congestion of business of this nature is absolutely not acceptable. Needless to say, the amount of disruption, and again, another neighbor bringing up crime, will prove to be unacceptable. I pull out of Spiny Run every morning on my way to work at 7:30, and I have to be patient. I have to take my time in making that left turn, and, you know, some days, you know, I get, I get a little nervous, and now I'm going to get a little even more nervous. And the other thing that we're worried about is, is the service being on until midnight, and the noise, the smell, and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Excuse me?
If you approve this zoning change...
Excuse me for a second, I have, I have to do this just for the lawyers. I'm reopening the floor to the public. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just...
Okay.
Okay. It's just procedure.
Gail Gudon, Heather Ridge, if you do approve this zone change, when would construction begin, and how long would it take?
Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Who from staff would like to address the overall questions about economics, ecology, policies?
I'll, I'll do my best to start off and knock some of these off. The ESG document that was referenced, the village, to my knowledge, does not have such a document. We rely heavily on, you know, the state of Illinois, Illinois EPA, as, as kind of the, the guidance for regional air pollution type of regulation, so we do not have anything individual specific to the village of Gurnee. I know Mayor Hood's office has implemented a, a, an environmental committee over the last couple of years that meets regularly, but to my knowledge, they have not established a formal policy document at this point. The light pollution question, you know, everything on the site is proposed per code. As far as the lighting levels for the public, you know, we have maximum lighting levels that are allowed onsite, we have maximum lighting levels that are allowed on the perimeter of the site, they are able to meet or exceed all of those limitations without exception on this site, as proposed. Financial generation questions, the purview of this board does not take into account the financial aspects of this development. This board is looking at just the, the land planning and, and, and neighborhood use of this project, so the, the financial aspects are not contemplated as part of their decision-making process. That is part of the decision-making process once it gets up to the village board, but at this point, we're looking at land use and land planning, so we're not contemplating that the financial benefits to the village or other government entities. The notice radius was one of the, the comments, whether, you know, who was noticed? The state statute, I believe, requires notification within 250 feet of any development project. The village of Gurnee exceeds that, we do 500 feet. In addition, we post signs on the property and put notices in the newspaper, so unfortunately, we can't notify everybody in the village, it is public information on the village's website, but we do provide physical notice to all property owners within 500 feet of any property that is up for a special use permit or for a zoning change. Let's see, runoff as part of the development, actually, when the, the site was mass-graded and developed previously in 2008, and before, the detention basin was built for this site, anticipating this type of use or more impervious surface, so all of the adequate stormwater detention was constructed at that time. Based upon the size of the parking lot, they will have to put a oil and grit interceptor before it dispenses into the, the floodplain and the detention basin, so they do have some water quality features that they will have to install as part of their site development, which will meet all of the, this village's and county's regulations. There was a question about the service bays facing west, they face both east and west, so I'm not sure if they're drive-through bays, or if they're single-entry on both sides. I believe they're single-entry on both sides. So, there, there will be access into and out of the building from either side. Question about the traffic and the access of the fire department exiting the site. The fire department right now, like I indicated earlier, we applied for and tried to get a traffic signal at that site. We were denied a permit from IDOT because there was inadequate cross-traffic entering that intersection. This project will enable the village to move forward with that traffic signal. All of the traffic signals in the village of Gurnee have a opticom system, which enables the fire trucks to turn the lights green to clear traffic out so that they can leave. At present, all we, we have the opticom system on the intersection, however, all it does is do a flashing beacon along 21. I've also talked to the fire chief about this, and basically, our fire trucks approach the intersection, they stop, and they wait for the cross-traffic to fully stop, and they make eye contact with the cross-traffic before they will proceed out. With this construction of the traffic signal at that intersection, red lights on 21, better confident, you know, the, the truck traffic or whoever's in front of them will be able to clear. By the time the trucks, by the time the fire trucks get up there, that traffic should be cleared, and the fire trucks should be able to make their way onto or across 21 quicker than the circumstance that they have right now.
I think you caught all the staff ones, Dave.
And I have a list of ones that might be better for the developer to answer.
There's one regarding signage, and whether it's illuminated or not, and I think I can talk a little bit about that. The ground sign is a screened box sign, so that means that the background will be opaque, the logo and the lettering in the sign will be translucent, so that will be illuminated at night, but the background will not. The wall signs are all halo-lit, so they're opaque lettering, backlit, so they're not directly illuminated like a Raceway-mounted or a Channel letter sign, but again, halo-illuminated, and the directional are non-illuminated.
There's a couple of questions related to operations, specifically what type of equipment's inside. I think I heard a question whether a spray booth or a dynamometer, I think is the...
Dynamometer, yes, someone asked that question.
Dynamometer.
There will be no spray booth or...
You have to use, I'm sorry, you have to use the microphone. We can hear you fine, but these meetings are recorded.
Apologies. There will be no dynamometer or spray booth installed on the facility.
Okay. And a procedural, a procedural question, there was a question raised about noise from idling vehicles?
I understand the concern, and I think what's changed over the last 20 years is the technology and engines. I, I would request anyone research that to, to learn more. Engine manufacturers prohibit idling for warranty purposes. It is not good for the engines on the new technology with the after-treatment device for the exhaust and the emission output, so rather than, take my word, I would suggest anyone do any research on that and see that idling is prohibited by manufacturers.
Okay. And there was a question about space counts, and, and I think the confusion kind of lies in, some spaces are designated as like passenger vehicle size, and other spaces are designated as semi-trucks and trailers. The, the total space count is?
347.
347.
347 for the memo, I was...
Yeah, I was, I was trying to get someone else to, to...
Sorry.
But, yeah.
The response to the question about parking, 112 spaces are automobile, and Tom, 200 and...
233 truck spaces.
We just verified the plans have 112 pedestrian spaces and 233 truck spaces. Of the 112 pedestrian, there are five ADA spots.
Say that again? Could, 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 could you repeat that last comment?
Of the 112 spaces for passenger vehicles, five of those spaces are ADA, accessible spaces.
Oh, ADA, okay, all right. Thank you. Tracy, Claire, did, did we miss anything?
Yeah, one question was, how long will construction take, and when will it begin?
Construction would begin, again, based on the approval, if we are granted the approval, timing that could be challenged by winter weather, so it, it most likely would begin as earliest as January would be the earliest. by winter weather. So it most likely would begin as earliest as January would be the earliest we would begin. Again, weather-dependent. The construction would be done and finished by the beginning of the fourth quarter of 2023. So call it October of next year.
So almost a one-year time.
That's correct.
Okay.
Doug, do you have any experience with crime data on any of your other sites? Sorry to make you get up again.
I do not. Unfortunately, no. I don't know that there's any more. I can tell you that we have, you know, fencing. We have security, the lighting. Of course, we'll have cameras. So whatever crime element could be there will be deterred as best as possible. It's in our best interest to control that as well. But I have no traffic or crime data to provide.
Thank you. And then may be able to help answer this one. You know, I know one of the questions was why this area. As far as the village of Gurnee is concerned, we don't have that many 25-acre parcels of raw land left to develop. There are a handful of spots around the village that are, you know, developed, but a lot of them have some hair on them and are not easily developed. This one is a, you know, basically shovel-ready site that is, you know, prepped for development. It has all the stormwater detention. It has the water main. It has the sanitary sewer all prepared, as well as the access to the tollway. You know, to and from the south, off of 120, fairly close to the site. To and from the north, off of 21, just north of the site. So from a traffic perspective, rather than moving a use like this into an industrial park, which is further into the community, the truck traffic or whatever traffic generation would still have to utilize those exits, maybe in addition to the Grand Avenue, and drive further into the community to be able to get the same level of service as what we're seeing here. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
And Dave, if I may add to that, I think the testimony was that the traffic generation was about 1% of existing.
Correct.
Beyond that, I think that's exactly right. I think it's, we're a business-to-business model. I stress that, you know, I heard a couple of comments about we're bringing more traffic or more, we're trying to draw more truck traffic in. Again, what comes to our traffic or our facilities will come to our facilities. The majority of our business is conducted at the place of business. So I'm not sure, other than just being there and the traffic that is created by that, I don't know what additional traffic we're trying to create by suggesting that we're looking at other communities to serve, whether it be other counties or southwest, I'm sorry, southeast Wisconsin. Again, those are areas we will go to. Our parts delivery trucks, our salespeople, mobile service trucks that will go to the site of our customers to conduct their business. So I'm not sure I understood the nature of that comment. I just wanted to try to clarify as best I could.
And just to confirm, I believe the testimony was that while the vehicle's being serviced, the overhead doors are closed?
That's correct.
And Jim, just to, to talk about that a little bit, that is actually a code requirement. We, when we wrote our zoning code, we had complaints in the past from dealerships where doors were or repair facilities where doors were open and repairs were being conducted. And so that is a use standard that has to be met now. To do any work, the doors have to be down.
Thank you.
I believe Javier has an answer possibly to your office question.
Yeah, sometimes these microphones are hard to get used to. I hear voices, and I'm not sure where they're coming from.
So I promise to give you an answer. So, so the last, there was the last plan for the parcel in question, call for 461,000 square feet of office, you know, that was quite a few years ago. But an office building, on average, daily trips is 10 to 12 trips per thousand square feet. So if I use the low end, the 10, 10 trips per thousand square feet for the 461,000, that's 4,610 trips daily. Now, the peak hours is much higher because, like I mentioned, you have the office, like all of us going to work and coming back. So the trip generation in the morning is substantially higher. It's almost 700 cars as well as in the evening. So it has a much bigger impact during the peak hours, as I mentioned before, than this would ever have.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any additional questions?
I had one additional question. I didn't quite understand this. Do you actually drive a truck out to your customer to show it to them then?
That's correct.
Okay. And how often do you do that during the day?
Not very often. Typically, the proposals that are done by our salespeople, they go out, they meet the customer. The customer knows what the truck looks like. He knows what he's buying. He has them already in his business. So we don't need to show them very often. It just, there's just not much need for that. So it's us going to them. If there's a delivery perhaps of a vehicle that's been purchased, we'll deliver it to them, and that's when we will take it to them. But on a daily basis, in and out of test drives or delivery of vehicles, I'm sorry, bringing vehicles to customers for them to look at, that does not happen.
Thank you.
And the majority of vehicles that you're servicing, are they semis or are they box or combination? What are they?
This area is going to be a heavy box mix of our product. It varies by our locations. Some locations are heavier of the tractors where they're the larger trucks, and some are, you know, like certain areas are more inclined to have the box trucks or the delivery vehicles. So I anticipate a good mix of the two. What percentage? I don't have that off the top of my head.
And based on something you said earlier, that typically it takes three, four hours to service a vehicle.
Four to five typically.
Sorry. Is there a demonstrable difference between if it's a box truck or a tractor?
No, no, sir. There are engines, there are diesel engines, and they're, the failure rates are similar in nature. So I don't have that detail specifically, but no, I do not see that there is much difference from the average length of repair for, say, a box truck versus a tractor.
Liliana, any other questions? Dave?
No questions.
Let me just gather a thought here. I'm not sure if we've had enough discussion on the request for the height of the monument sign.
I was thinking about that earlier. How, you were saying earlier that that sits quite a bit below the grade of the street right there? Because we've had this issue before, like even the.
The car wash.
Car wash. So is that part of the consideration here? You know how far that sits below grade where that monument sign is going in?
So the roadway.
I thought I read in the notes it was a foot.
Right. The difference between, I think, the grade of 21 and where the sign sits is only about one foot.
Oh.
It's the difference between the building is about ton-feet down. So the building sits down, but the sign is only about one foot down.
Got it.
And I'm trying to picture is, is 21, does 21 have a? What's, does 21, is it basically pretty flat between Manchester and, was it Delaware? Or is it, is there an incline?
21's going downhill to the south.
It's going downhill to the south.
I'm trying to think here.
As you're approaching that grade change.
And the site drops off fairly considerably towards the river from 21. Trying to think.
So the, so the grade of the road wouldn't be?
It's not consistent across the entire site.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't influence our perspective of only a one-foot difference in grade where the sign is located?
Not significantly, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other detailed questions that any of us have on the individual articles that we need to address? Any questions about landscaping? Any concerns about the landscaping? I'm sorry, where's that coming from? I typically am pretty lenient on this, so I'll open the floor to the public. So, but you need to come to the microphone, ma'am.
While she's coming up, if I could just quickly answer one other question that a couple of residents asked about or made reference to, and that is the landscaping that's proposed to go in and its quality or its ongoing maintenance. I want to clarify, we're not asking for any variations from what's required in terms of size of trees or quantities of trees or that would be installed. There's no request for relief. It's going to be, as was indicated before when talking about the lighting, it's going to be code compliant. And as one of you had said early on, this is a request for a special use permit. So you have the opportunity to create conditions to ensure ongoing maintenance of the landscaping. Thank you.
Regina Keller, again. I apologize for not thinking of this, but you had mentioned that there was houses in the areas, but it looks like you're mainly in industrial areas where you have your present facilities. And it would seem to me that that would be more appropriate than plopping it in the middle of a more residential kind of area. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
One statement is, I think.
Ma'am, you need to get closer to the microphone.
Again, I'm sorry. It's right here. I think the village did a disservice to Heather Ridge. I know you went by the requirements that are necessary to notify people. You're talking a residency of over 1,000 units. And two of those entrances that I can think of are directly onto Milwaukee Avenue, and that would be Manchester and Heather Ridge Drive. There's another entrance and exit on Gauges Lake Road that goes over to Milwaukee Avenue. So it does, it does involve a lot of Heather Ridge individuals who aren't here tonight because they didn't know. The other question, the only other question I have is, is it possible, if this gets approved, to change the servicing time to no later than nine or 10 o'clock at night, so that the lights will go down at a reasonable hour for people to sleep? That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to close the floor to the public.
There was one more lady trying to, there was another lady trying to raise her hand. You missed her.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll reopen.
I wasn't going to come up, but I am. So you guys have talked about your.
Excuse me, ma'am, you need to state your name for the record.
Debbie Kavolcek. So I'm in Victorian Village. So we're over by 41. So that's an area that hasn't been talked about. So it's really already noisy. We sit outside, like you guys were saying. It's already noisy. With the trucks that come off of 41, it's constant. And I just moved over there in May. And I think the overwhelming response is noise and traffic. And it's residential, and we like the community, and we just see a change happening. And, you know, it's tough. It's what we're talking with, with what's going to be proposed, a lot of us are just in disagreement of that. We like our homes. I lived in Gurnee, moved away from Gurnee, just came back to Gurnee, and this doesn't sit well with me. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm closing the floor to the public. Doug, if you could address the the question that was raised about the surrounding neighborhoods of your existing facilities.
Yeah, and I want to clarify, Heather Ridge, we had a conference call with the Heather Ridge Board Association yesterday. The Spinney Run Board Association, homeowners association board yesterday. We met with the office complex, the property manager, and two of the practices last Friday, I believe. So we've conducted, I think, three or four different Zoom calls, but that's after we had notified each of the homeowners association, which is really the best way. We don't have access to the individual homeowners, the residences, the addresses, the names. So we went through the homeowners association for each of the affected communities, Cobble Creek, Heather Ridge, Spinney Run, and the property manager for the office complex to the adjacent to the north. So we, and that was weeks ago. So I can't speak to what communication was done from that point to the residents, but I just want to make it clear that we did offer up a multitude of times to have different Zoom calls to accommodate questions and answers. And those calls, quite frankly, went well. So I just want to make sure that point is made. We'd be glad to conduct some of those conversations after this. If we'd like, just go through your homeowners association, and we could schedule those calls.
Great. Thank you. But the question about the surrounding neighborhoods in your existing facilities.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure that I agree. If you look at our Gary facility, it's residential or directly across the street. There's a medical facility ironically adjacent to the west, and it's 45 acres of forest to the left. But the majority of the north surrounding area is all residential, and that's directly across a very small two-lane road. Our Elmhurst facility is across York Road, which is not nearly as wide as Milwaukee is. And that's residences across the street. Admittedly, that side of our street is more industrial, but it is residential across the street, and that community of residences goes well east from there. And then our Shorewood location has a back fence corner is adjacent to the Joliet, one of Joliet's nicest communities, one of their areas. There's a berm and a fence that we're adjacent to on our back property line. The rest of that area admittedly is industrial, but there is residential directly adjacent toward the back of our lot. And again, I want to reiterate, in all of those facilities, we've never had a complaint about traffic noise or anything else.
Thank you. Any other details about the special use permits? Some of my concerns still tie into just the range of compatibility. It's two very extreme uses. And I think if I look at a broad sense at the way that most of our zoning and districts are laid out and uses, adjacent uses, we maybe call it transitional uses from lower densities to higher density type, more intensive type uses. And I think under most circumstances, we try not to put the most intense type of uses next to lower or least intensive type uses. And so what this feels like to me from a compatibility standpoint, even though it's quote-unquote "commercial," it's, it is a more intensive feeling use next to a less intensive use across the street on the residential side. So I think that's where I'm struggling with a little bit. So. But, but when you say compatibility or transitional, what's the key thing that you're concerned about? Well, so if we, again, if we lean back on the vision of the comprehensive plan, it showed it as an office-campus type use, which is business, yes, but yet it can still have more of a, even a residential feel to it, even though we might be talking about more traffic, you know, or that, it's just the intensity of the use from a noise standpoint, the hours extensive standpoint, that type of thing. So, you know, maybe there's a middle ground in this somewhere too, you know, if this is going to move forward. Maybe there's a way that there can be a compromise on the service hours or restriction on the use of the doors to the west during certain periods of time, or additional measures that can be taken to the lighting to mitigate any overt reflection to the west through shielding or something. I, I don't know. I don't want to sit here and try to negotiate this stuff, or, you know, I'm just trying to be an advocate for those that are sharing the greatest amount of concerns about the way that this will impact their potential life. They live next to it. Okay? So I'm just putting that out there.
I, I do understand what you're saying, and I thought about that earlier, but like they said, if not this, what else? And I can't imagine having a big box store there like Home Depot or Lowe's or something like that that would generate less traffic and less noise than something like this. I mean, I don't know either whether this is the perfect fit, but I'm trying to think of what else. What was it that you asked him about for traffic study? Was that a office building? Far more traffic.
Exactly.
Far more.
And I dare say a Costco, a Costco would probably be even more.
Costco or, yeah, Sam's Club or anything like that would generate more traffic. So sometimes I see something like this, and I get the residents' concerns about this, but I'm thinking that this is going to develop as something at some point. And the point is brought up, brought up that office space is not in big demand at all. In fact, there's lots more examples of companies closing down their office space. In fact, there's lots more examples of companies closing down their office space. My wife works for Pfizer, and they've gotten rid of, I believe, four buildings now in the business park. So, you know, they've vacated. So this is going to sit for a long time as office. If it's developed into C2, it could become a lot of different things. And there is C2 right across the street, so I don't see this as being a really bad fit. I don't know about a truck business. I did as much research as I can, and it doesn't look like it's going to generate a whole lot of traffic, especially after talking about not delivering or not bringing the trucks out to the customers. So mainly, it's just the cars coming in for service parts. And to me, I don't know what would be a better fit for this. I see it, it does look a lot more industrial than a, than some of the other options, like an office space or a Costco or whatever, but it generates less traffic than any one of the other options I can think of. Even a apartment complex would most likely generate more traffic at the rush hour point. So I don't know what other recommendation there is. Somebody who wanted to give this land to the Park District didn't buy it, so.
Exactly. And while we don't specifically address individual projects based on their economic contribution, our overall concept of the comprehensive plan is one of maintaining viability for the community at large, and we need to have a good balance of commercial districts, residential districts, and industrial districts. And I'm not really troubled at all by the C2 request. I do kind of have a question, though, for staff. All those medical and financial units that are directly across the street on the other side of Manchester, have we received any comments or questions from them?
I have not received any. Tracy?
No, I have not either.
So, I mean, that's kind of telling, too, in my mind. All right. But back to where I was going, I think we've had enough discussion on considering the pros and cons of the C2. And the outdoor storage, I think we've covered as well. The directional signing, the directional signage request, they're roughly a little bit more than twice what's allowed. And if I read the materials correctly, it had to do with commercial?
Right. So our directional signs are allowed at four square feet, and they're proposed at nine square feet. But if you look at half of them, probably most of them don't use all nine square feet, so it's a little deceptive. And then our code also does not require, does not allow the signs to contain a commercial message, and it has their name and logo on it before, at the very top, before the direction, before an arrow that says deliveries left or service straight ahead. So both of those require minor sign exception. Is that right, Claire?
Special use for the size of the directional signage to be nine square feet instead of four, and then a minor sign exception for the commercial message portion.
So there's kind of two issues here. I mean, do you really need to have your logo on the signs when people already know that's where they are? But the other, the other point that Tracy makes is that while the size, the physical size of the structure, if you will, may be nine square feet, the actual quote-unquote sign, based on measuring, how we would measure it if it was on a building, is significantly less. Am I saying that properly?
Correct. Now, could they use that in the future, potentially? Again, these are directional signs that are internal to the site.
Okay. And are they then really considered signs if they can't be seen by another property?
They can be seen from the property lines, which they probably, there, a lot of them are right around the Ring Road. So Manchester. And our code does have standards for directional signs.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about the request for relief, about the changes in architecture on the longer, on the longer walls?
I'm sorry?
I mean, this one still comes into play, right? The variation in elevations for an elevation less longer than 100 feet?
Yes, that would be a design standard modification, which would be a review by the Planning and Zoning Board now.
That's still an issue.
That and the windows, yes.
Despite the-
Transparency percentage.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about that request?
I don't, I don't see it being, I mean, it doesn't look too bad because they have some depth changes to the building. There's a lot of architectural changes in the face of the building, too, which is what we're usually trying to get out of, you know, that kind of plan. So I think it's been divided up pretty well, not one big giant wall that's 100 feet long.
I would concur. It doesn't look monotonous to me.
No.
In the color, yeah, okay, all right. I just want to make sure we've talked about all these. And the landscaping departure, my understanding is it's, they're going to have a number of bushes and trees that are required by code. It's just that the placement of some of them doesn't address the strict code, specifically as it relates to the storage area for the inventory.
Right. Not only do they have the number of trees and shrubs required by code, but they also have the amount of green area required by code. It's just not internal to the parking lot. So they beefed up the setback to 21, they beefed up the setback to Manchester. So that's how they accommodate the additional green space that's required, normally required to be interior to a parking lot.
And from my perspective, and strictly my perspective, the requirement to have landscaping interior to the parking area is more an aesthetic thing for a typical employee, consumer, whatever. And there really isn't going to be a lot of foot traffic in those areas to create that aesthetic need.
And this is not something that's unique to this dealership.
Right.
It's something that's been consistently requested as a departure from all of our other dealerships, just because-
We just, we recently did it with the new Anthony.
Ponya or the Anthony facility.
Right, okay. Okay, we talked a little bit about the monument sign. Does anybody have any, about the height of the monument sign? Does anybody have any questions about that?
I was just going to say, when I was looking at that, when we were talking before, there are parking trucks around that sign, so I would imagine that might be one issue that they would have if they made a shorter sign seen over the top of the truck. You are displaying trucks out there, right?
Where is that sign going to be in relation to the island where the trucks are going to be?
Right on the corner, if you, right here on this.
So the sign is closer to the street than, did I see that right? The sign's closer to the street than the display area?
A pad actually goes up beside it. If you see, there's trucks that park up this direction and the other way, towards Manchester. I blew it up when I had it on the computer.
I don't know if you can see it better here. You've got the paving coming up to it, and you see the little lines that's inside. That's the sign.
So the sign is on the very corner?
Correct.
Okay. So I wouldn't perceive that the vehicle would obscure the sign.
There is a pad up here. This one's pretty clear.
See, the vehicles can park up here. This is the sign. It's not set out in front of that pad.
But they don't have to pull it all the way up?
True. They would not have to.
Okay.
So.
All right. Okay, any other discussion before we go into the motion phase?
Can we get an idea? I know there was some exceptions made on some of the signs along Grand Avenue. Is there anything on Grand Avenue that's 18 feet high? Like, I know the dealership, the Honda dealership had some modification to the sign, monument sign in front of even the shopping center, Jewelasco, Home Depot. Any of those 18 feet tall?
Those are probably greater. I know the Roarman sign at Tri-State and Grand, I think, was granted the minor sign exception to 18 feet. So I think that one is a 18-plus sign.
Okay.
You can envision that one.
Yes, I go by it all the time.
Any other discussion? We have revised motion templates that take into consideration the recent code changes that were approved by the Village Board on Monday. So who'd like to start?
Let's start the zoning map amendment from O2 PUD to C2. And the motion reads, motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group for zoning map amendment to rezone property located at 775 South Illinois Route 21 from O2 PUD Office Campus District as a planned unit development to C2 Community Commercial District.
We have a motion, a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Paff. Any discussion on the motion? Can we roll call, please?
Morgan?
No.
Northop?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Tansula.
Aye, motion carries. Before we jump into the next one, there was one detail that we hadn't discussed about the security lighting. If it gets triggered by a motion detector, how long for it to stay on? Staff feels that 15 minutes might be a little long. Would petitioner be comfortable with five or 10? The security lighting, if it's triggered by a motion detector, how long stay?
It could be set at any interval. So if there's a requirement by the judge boards or recommendation, we can have that set to an interval of five minutes or three minutes.
Are you comfortable with five?
Yes.
Okay. So let's note that change in the reading of the motion. Can I make a suggestion on this next one? That we split it into three different motions to address the three specific questions? So let's deal with number one first.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group for special use permits to allow the following on property located at 775 South Route 21 in substantial conformance with the submitted plans. Number one.
We're going to do them separately, though?
Okay. Number one, special use permit to allow the establishment and operation of a vehicle truck dealership with outdoor storage and display in substantial conformance with the attached plans, with the condition that the fencing proposed to the south of the building, west of the internal drive, be eight-foot-tall Roth iron fencing, and that the security lighting, if triggered by motion, brightening to full illumination for up to five or 10 minutes.
Just five.
Five minutes instead of 15 minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morgan?
No.
Northop?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Special use permit for the following. Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group for special use permits to allow the following on property located at 775 South Route 21 in substantial conformance with the submitted plans. A special use permit to allow directional signage associated with the proposed dealerships to each be nine feet, nine square feet in size.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morgan?
No.
Northop?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
Abstain.
Tansula.
Uh, no. So motion fails.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group for special use permits to allow the following on property located at 775 South Route 21 in substantial conformance with the submitted plans. A special use permit to allow departures from the parking lot landscaping island requirements, and the requirement that 10% of area internal to the parking lot, display lot, be landscaped green.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Liliana. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morgan?
No.
Northop?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Tansula.
Aye, motion carries.
Site plan review. Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group for site plan review on property located at 775 South Route 21 in substantial conformance with the submitted plans.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Paff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morgan?
No.
Northop?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Tansula.
Aye, motion carries.
Minor sign exception.
And this one is on a motion to approve, okay?
Motion to approve the following minor sign exceptions for Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group on property located at 775 South Route 21. We're going to do these as one. We'll do this as one.
Yeah, we can do this one as one.
Minor sign exception to allow the height of the main ground sign to increase by 50% from 12 feet to 18 feet. And number two, minor sign exception to allow a commercial message on directional signage.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morgan?
No.
Northop?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
No.
Uh, no, motion fails.
Design standard modifications. Motion to approve the following design standard modifications for Patson, Inc., DBA Trans Chicago Truck Group on property located at 775 South Route 21. Number one, departure from the building design requirement that the west elevation, which is over 100 feet in length, have a minimum two-feet vertical variation in roof height that is repeated on center, no more than every 50 linear feet. And number two, departure from the requirement that the west- And number two, departure from the requirement that the west elevation provide at least fifty percent transparency between two and ten feet above grade.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Morgan?
No.
Norten, Tom?
Nay.
Pat?
Aye.
Where?
Abstain.
Tansula.
Aye. Motion, there's no motion, right? Because it's tied.
Final authorization on this one now.
What?
Because this is a...
Oh, so if we have no, oh, what do we do? But he's saying we have final authority on this one.
We have final authority on this one.
I remember he had this happen before.
It's a two-two tie.
So then, does the Village Board take it on appeal then?
We can handle it that way.
You can or cannot?
I believe we can handle it on appeal to the Village Board.
I think we've done that something before.
That is, the appeal process is to the Village Board.
Okay.
I'm just not a hundred percent sure on Roberts' rules for a two-two tie, if there's, if it leans one way or the other.
I don't know.
Brian, but I think that's the case. It goes to the board.
It goes to the Village Board. Okay. We'll just, we'll handle it that way as a seal to the Village Board.
Okay. And we're all through with formal motions and everything, but just to give staff input to Village Board, my no vote on the minor sign exception. Oh, but that was...
Was that the two-part one with the commercial signage?
So what did we end up on that one? Was that a tie too?
That was, it was no. One-four.
Oh, that was no, okay. All right, okay. Okay. But to give it, to give my perspective on that issue and next steps, I'm okay with one or two feet, like thirteen to fourteen, but not comfortable with going all the way to eighteen. And I don't see the need for the commercial messaging on the directional signs. So, okay. All right. As you've heard on most of these issues, we are recommending body to the Village Board and staff will keep you apprised of when the Village Board will hear the matter. Thank you. Next meeting is on the calendar for October nineteenth. Do we have anything?
We don't have any public hearings scheduled. Something else could come up. It's always a possibility, but we don't have any public hearings scheduled.
All right, so stay tuned. I'm going to open the floor to the public for comments and anything that was not on today's agenda. If not, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Thank you, everyone. It was a long meeting, but I appreciate everyone's patience and professionalism. Good night. Motion to adjourn? Oh, I always bring... We have a motion to adjourn. Seconded by, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.